Can everybody please rise for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have been called to order. First is call to the community. This is the time for citizens who would like to address the commission on a non-agenda item. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to asking staff to review the matter, asking that the matter be put on a future agenda or responding to criticism. We have one community member who would like to speak, but we're going to delay that per her request until we get to the Hilltop discussion, correct?
Correct.
Staff report. Community and Recreation Services Monthly Report presenter Tricia Kramer, Community and Recreation Services Director.
Thank you Chairman Taddy and Commissioners. The monthly report is in your agenda packet. I'll just confirm a couple of things. As of September 6th, we've returned to offering free court use to the community on Saturdays and Sundays. Those were open during the summertime because the rec center was open those extended hours. So you didn't necessarily see or feel that, especially with it being so hot. But now that aquatics is not open to the public, we just wanted everyone to be aware that those courts are still open to the community on the weekends. So we've got those open on Saturdays and Sundays for all to use for basketball, tennis and pickleball if they so choose. And and we are seeing some members of the public start to pick up using that. And I'm sure as the weather gets milder, that'll increase. The Odyssey swim team and St. John Paul II are still practicing at the pool. Matter of fact, Odyssey had a swim meet tonight that went for went briefly. And then due to lightning being close by, they decided to call the swim meet, but that's all going well. We have been looking into working with, we've been getting estimates from various vendors on resurfacing the pool deck. We're coming up on five years since the last time we did that. And we're seeing some of that decking come up and and we see some some dips. So we will keep you updated as to what kind of quotes we get and when we start that project. Presumably it will be in the early spring before lifeguards get going again, as long as the pricing is right. We did set aside funding in the budget, the capital improvement plan budget for this year for that. Pre-school is off this week for fall break, but they are doing well otherwise. Special events, you've got a nice listing there in your packet on the report, lots of good stuff coming up. The only thing that I caution on is the Addams Family movie showing on Saturday may be called for weather. But we will put those updates on the website and social media if that happens. And I know that we've got registrations in full force for winter season. So I'm sure Pat's got some updates since what I put on the report.
Thank you, Tricia. Commissioner Taddy, sorry, Commissioners. So as Tricia said, winter registration is open. It opened last week. We currently have 162 registered, 85 in winter basketball and 77 in winter T-ball. So when winter season, the early on stage is kind of slow because we're still, you know, we're only week three of our fall sports. So once that starts to get closer to the end of registration, that's when our numbers start to pick up. So we do expect that those numbers to increase each week, but we are excited to see where those numbers are. We are ahead of what we were last year. So and then the only other thing really is our adult cornhole tournament is November 15th. We have four registered right now. So if you guys find a partner, come register and November 15th is when our annual cornhole tournament will be starting. So we're excited to get that started. But other than that, that's all really for sports, so.
Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
There's no event with the Wigwam this year, right?
No, no fall event with the Wigwam this year. That's correct.
Or it may not be for this year, but maybe for future years. I know the German Air Force squadron is doing their Oktoberfest again, which they had off for many years. And I know a decade, maybe two ago, they partnered with the city and did one in the city. Might be something if they're gonna, this was a very long time ago.
This is the one that they do at the.
No, I was like nine. Or maybe 11, somewhere in that range. However, that may be something, could be a better partner with a more authentic experience if it's something you want to explore for future years.
But that's the one right now that they do at the Goodyear Airport.
Yeah, but they haven't, they're, this is the first one they'll do and they shut down right at COVID and they hadn't done it since, maybe even before that. They, yeah, they fly in bands and they try to, they go with top.
Good to know. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Okay, I had one more question. On the the no parking for Western Sky, is that's forced kids to cross over a major road to get picked up. And we're also putting in signs, like it says, was my understanding that right? It's that they were, parents were parking in the neighborhood in order to pick up their kids. Right? The neighborhood that's just south of Western Sky.
Okay, playing sports or?
No, I mean, I don't know. It's on here with.
I think you're.
Yeah, I'm ahead of my.
Our first site with the laptop.
Hey Kyle, heads up.
That's, that's, that's great. I can prepare for that answer now.
I'm sorry. I got, I got out of.
I too am a little bit off on my laptop right now. I clicked into the, all right, I think I'm back. Are there, are there any more questions? Okay, thank you very much. Now we gotta get back to the.
Go over here and click on that one.
Just click on the board.
And then go over here and click in there, you're in that site and then you can move your.
First, everybody's first time using them, so get used to it.
Okay, so. So now we are on the Director of Public Works, Mr. Kyle Ames. Pardon me, Director of Public Works, Safety and Training Coordinator, Kyle Ames, for his report. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you Chairman Taddy, members of the commission. Good to see everybody again or hear everybody again. Your report's in your packet. Just a few things that we wanna to touch on. Stuff started the winter overseeding process these past few weeks. Public parks and riders were being completed to accommodate the youth sports programs and and their weather schedules. As Pat knows, we we try to accommodate his fall, his fall teams and fall sports. So we kind of jump around throughout the city to kind of accommodate his programs. So those should be wrapping up mid-November, towards the end of November. So it's a, it's a long process, but it it takes time. So. We've installed 27 no school parking signs along the Gir Lane and Vineyard and the Village One subdivisions. These signs are being installed by the concerns of residents who reside in the area. Unfortunately, the city of Goodyear have placed no parking signs in the surrounding neighborhoods adjacent to Western Sky. So what has happened is parental shifting and parental drop off has shifted over to our city limits. And it's caused some traffic concerns and safety issues. We've reached out to Avondale PD to kind of enforce these issues, but unfortunately they can't enforce if if signs are not being posted. So that's why these no school parking drop off signs have been placed through this area. Village Park and Turtle Park shade structures installations are underway. Unfortunately, these have been delayed a couple more weeks. We but we gotta, we got back our SED calculations for structural and they're making some adjustments to it. So once these are wrapped up and we receive these back, that project will continue. I've requested that they expedite these SEDs to get them back fairly quickly. Usually they take four to six weeks, but they're gonna try to get them back to us in about one to two weeks. Public Works Office behind the City Hall has been removed and the platform pit that that trailer sat on has been completely backfilled by our staff. So that's all good to go now. I had West Coast Arborist plant 25 new orange trees at various locations. And then is actually counting, I've added additional trees and other species of trees as well, as well as their continual of the removals. And then West Coast, they're completely done with the California fan palm trimming. They were about two or three weeks behind this year, just due to the past storms that we have, emergency call outs, stuff like that. But they, they are completely racked up with this. And then I actually have West Coast Arborist inside the Village One subdivision, trimming up all, a lot of the Rose Park area, a lot of the Village Park area, a lot of those oak trees and ash trees have kind of overtaken the roadways. So those are, those are being thinned out and cleaned. Looks like by the looks of it by today, it looks like they're, they're pretty wrapped up in that area. So I'm gonna have them move into a a different section of the city. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Gertz.
Surprised. On the the no school thing, so am I reading that right? That the city of Goodyear put up those signs in neighborhood likely south and and I suppose west of the school, east of the school, excuse me. And essentially we're doing the same thing in the neighborhood that's north of the school.
Correct.
Have, have either of us, either cities tried to work with communication coming out of the school to the parents on like what the appropriate parking or drop off situation ought to be and?
If you may. I'm in on this one because as a parent to both schools, yes, we are told that. However, there are so many parents picking up that it backs up so far down Wigwam Boulevard and 144th that it causes an additional traffic jam. So there's kind of a nightmare situation, literally Millennium, Western Sky and Litchfield. Because less buses mean more parent pickup.
And when you say less buses, you're referring to?
There's less bus options.
Because of the mileage change.
And to be fair, I know a lot of us walked when we were younger, but it's, it's hotter than we were, you know? And some of them are just kind of far enough that walking home is kind of two miles. So just to chime in on the logistics of what that looks like, it's kind of a nightmare trying to pick up and drop off at any three of these schools Monday through Friday.
So I suppose we've spoken to the school and at least like we're in communication with them. So they're not playing like lack of mole with where people are going.
Correct. And Commissioner Gertz, to to touch on that question, we've had a few meetings with the city of Goodyear representatives about these issues. We were having the same exact issue with Millennium High School. We were having some parking issues along Adobe, along Park Avenue. We ended up placing the same same signs along those areas to kind of alleviate the traffic congestion. We, we reached out to said residents in the area of of window hangers for, you know, permanent parking as as residents, but it's more directed towards, you know, school parking, school drop off and creating traffic issues through those surrounding neighborhoods. At the end of the day, it's a safety concern. You know, a lot of congestion on part, street parking, it, all it takes is for a child to run out from behind a car and and get ran over. You know, it's not, it's, it's hard to visually see a child when both sides of the streets are being compacted with cars.
Okay. I don't know that there's a good option by Millennium, but by Western Sky, I think they've had a decent partnership with Desert Springs Church down the road for like an after school, open gym sort of thing. Maybe that's, they would be open to drop off there. That way the walk is along like one almost uninterrupted sidewalk versus neighborhoods.
Commissioner Giordano.
I just actually have a piggyback question on the safety and it doesn't have to do with Western Sky. It has to do with Litchfield Elementary. Is there top of a permanent school zone sign right here on Old Litchfield Road? Because there's not one. So sometimes they wheel one out, sometimes it's facing the wrong way. But speaking of like safety and kids running across, they cross right here at this little cobblestone. And if you're turning right here at this stop sign, you don't see it until you're at the cobblestone with kids already in and they fly through here. I don't know if anybody is like kiddos at Litchfield right now, but I would implore anyone in this room to sit here in the mornings or in the afternoons and watch everybody fly right here on Old Litchfield and they can't cross. So and there's not a permanent one. There's a permanent one on Sagebrush. Now there's one on Neowen and there's one on Wigwam, but there's not one right here. So just sorry, throwing out safety for kiddos.
Sure. Absolutely. I will give a civil and we will look into if this warrants a a saying.
Are there any other questions?
Question. Sir. Kyle, regarding Turtle Park and I assume Village Park, does, does Village Park also have the, I saw Turtle Park, there's some orange construction fencing up. Does Village Park have the same fencing up?
It does not, Commissioner Colbreath. It's, we're, we're doing one park at a time. They tried to start on this project, like I said, and then the SED calculations came back and we weren't satisfied with them. We had them readjust. Like I said, we had them expedited. So we should be receiving those back in the next week or two. And then once they finish Turtle Park, they'll be jumping over to Village Park.
So if we don't have an exact start date for Turtle Park, would you consider taking down the orange netting? So kids can use the playground in the meantime?
I can definitely reach out to the contractors, see if they can remove the orange netting for the time being. Their plans were to dig footers before. I haven't heard back from them in the last week to see when that was actually going to start, but I will definitely reach out and and find out.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, if they're gonna dig footers, then obviously they can leave the net up. But if it's, I just don't want it to sit there for multiple weeks with no work going on and kids also can't use the playground. So just wanted to put that out there for consideration.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. James.
You're welcome. Thank you.
How do I get back to the agenda?
Upper left.
Yeah. You click on the agenda packet, you can scroll through the whole thing.
Oh, boy, that's a big. There we go. Okay, so on to business. Preliminary Hilltop Park Design. Presenter Randy Proch, Planning Director. Discussion and possible action to recommend approval to the City Council. The preliminary Hilltop Park Design. Mr. Randy.
Chairman, Randy couldn't be here in person tonight. However, he does have a video that we're going to play for you. We thought it was best for him to explain the updates on the park and what he's asking of you guys for tonight. And if you have any questions after that, we can certainly take that, those back to him.
All right. Well, we are high tech tonight.
We're working on it.
About it.
Thank you. Now, there was a request for a comment to be made at this time, correct, Trish?
It's correct.
So ma'am, you are Mary Dixon.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you and welcome.
Thank you. Mary Dixon, I am a resident here at Litchfield Park, but I'm here mainly representing the PW Litchfield Heritage Center. We, of course, since we're going to be right in the middle of this new park, we have just been waiting with bated breath as to what this park was going to look like. So first and foremost, I want to thank this commission for retaining it and holding fast to just retaining the historical nature of that. So thanks to you, Don Campbell, who was the landscape architect who put this all together. He did an absolute phenomenal job. We are very excited about what we see. And the reason we are very excited about it is, I hope you all know this already, but in July, the Hilltop was designated by the state of Arizona as one of their historic registries or registry places. We are adjusting it just a little bit to send to national. We have a little extra time to do that because the historic, the national historic registration is on furlough. So if we sent it in, it wouldn't get looked at anyway. So we're, we're fine tuning it because we would really like to have this hilltop designated as a national historic place. Huge history on this hilltop. How many of you have been to the hilltop? Okay. Oh, good. Awesome. Okay. The one thing that was not included in this that I, I and Bob's also from the Heritage Center. There's two items, and I know this was included in your packet. And I know Randy did this for a reason because this is the area that we have a little concern about. This particular area encompasses the reservoir. Randy referred to it as a tank. It's a reservoir. It is in the ground, so it's hidden from view. There's also a little pump house up there. And I brought pictures of both of those that I can pass around. So if you're not familiar. Now that reservoir is 60 feet in diameter. It's 15 feet deep and it has reinforcing steel at nine inches on center. I've seen the construction drawings. They were done in 1919. So that tells you the age. There was also some videos that were taken of the interior of this tank, probably about 30 years ago. And it's actually in very good condition. However, when this, when I talked with the design review board last week, they came up with all sorts of ideas about repurposing this reservoir. And the viability of that is just, it's not realistic. Like Randy said, it's over 100 years old. But we would like to keep at least the part that you can see. There's simply just a concrete ring and a manhole cover. We would like to see that incorporated in the little Ramada area. The Ramada is shown at a 30 foot diameter. The reservoir is a 60 foot diameter. In order to build that Ramada on top of the reservoir, that reservoir has to be filled in. Which is fine. It's not going to be used for its original purpose ever again. But we would like to retain that history because that reservoir at one time not only took care of all the water needs for that hilltop, but it served the entire Litchfield community. It was all gravity fed, came all the way down here to where the camps were. So we would like to see that retained. Likewise, the pump house is just a small little building. It's made out of red brick. It's construction wise, it's in perfect condition, except for some missing tiles on the roof. And since we can't salvage the restrooms that are up there because that was adobe and they hadn't been maintained. It's all corroded. That is not structurally sound. So we have the extra tile from that roof to repair the pump house. It would not affect this drawing from Mr. Campbell at all. So what, what we would like to ask, and I guess I didn't make it clear to the design review board. I'm hoping that you will recommend this on to P and Z and eventually on to council. But we would like you to add a little item to it to simply embrace the historical aspects of it as much as possible. There's no reason to take these structures down when we can incorporate it. One thing with history is once it's gone, it's gone. And it's one thing to be able to walk around that hilltop. And I'm interested in that story walk because this is the first time I've ever heard of the story walk. But I'm hoping it's the historical story walk that tells the story of Litchfield Park and what's up on that hill. Now I lost my train of thought. We'd like to also add that to just respect what's there and try to incorporate as much as possible to continue that story. Well, that's what I was saying. Once it's gone, it's gone. You know, it's one thing to talk about something and be able to point to it and say, this is the reservoir, this is the pump house, this is what it served. And it's another thing to say, well, at one time there used to be, and you, you can't see it. So history really comes alive when you can retain these structures. So we're hoping you will give that some consideration. And if you have any questions on Randy's presentation, I can probably answer any questions on it. So I thank you for your attention.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So the reservoir you're talking about that's pictured, is it, where is that on the map? Is it right where the Ramada is proposed or?
Yes. So over by Sunset Terrace, you'll see a, a little Ramada.
Okay.
And it shows some concrete steps around it, leading up to it.
A small rectangular Ramada or, or the round?
No, it's an off.
Okay. Okay.
And they show that sitting right on top of the reservoir, which structurally it can't do. So I mean, they have to fill in the reservoir.
So would your dream scenario be that that Ramada goes on top of the filled in reservoir? But then the wall, the.
That little lip of concrete.
Just stays there with some sort of designation that says.
And keep that manhole cover, you know, incorporate that in with the concrete.
Okay. Okay.
It would still be there.
Yeah. And then just turn the, it looks like a mini version of the church, actually. This little kinda without a cross on it.
The pump house and the little hang.
Yeah. To just keep that as and reinvent it as a restroom, maybe.
No, no.
No, just keep it.
No, there's equipment inside of it that we just need to leave it there. Just close the door, bolt it shut and let it tell its story. It's not very large. It's maybe 80 square foot at the most. So I mean, we're talking small. And if you have this, the pump house sits right next to the stairs there. So that tells me they're retaining the slope that you can see in that picture where the pump house is. So why take the pump house out?
Yeah. Because maybe it could even be, I visited Fort Apache and they've repurposed a lot of the little buildings. And they just have informational stuff on the walls inside these little buildings. So I don't know if that's big enough, but maybe that would be like a little place where people could go get historical knowledge and.
Well, that's what I'm hoping that story walk is about, is that it'll tell the story.
Can I?
Our application for the national registry includes not only the structures that are up there, but we wanted to include the pathways, the cactus garden, the rose gardens, sunset terrace. We, we put all of this in this application. And so I'm, we're thrilled that, you know, 90% of it has been retained. And it, even if the pump house has to go, it would, it would not affect that designation.
So the story walk, I think maybe I brought it up initially, but Randy's familiar with them. Kyle's familiar with them. I saw him in Pine Top. And actually on the kind I was envisioning, but I think yours is a good idea too. They're, they work in conjunction with the library, which makes it kind of a golden opportunity there. And there are actually either story pages or story pages with interactive things that you can do as you're walking along the trail, intergenerational, that kind of thing. However, there is enough room up there that there could also be an historical story walk. In addition to, because the lot, the story walks I've seen, they change. You know what I mean?
Oh.
So, so it's literally like you are reading a book kind of as you go along.
Oh, interesting.
And it might say something like between this stop and the next stop, see how many birds you see that are different or, you know, flap your arms like the whatever you see, you know, till the next one. And then there's a story that goes with it. But I love your idea of also having a hilltop historical story walk. And there's got to be enough room up there for both.
I think so.
But I think with the library being right there, the other kind is kind of a no brainer too.
There's really no reason why you couldn't select stories that would serve both purposes.
Yeah.
Building literacy and telling the story of the Litchfield family and the area and the.
Yeah, I mean.
Killing in with what we have.
Lots of options.
Yep. Because this, this hillside impacted not just little Litchfield Park. It impacted the entire Southwest Valley. And Southwest Valley is the way it is because of what Mr. Litchfield did.
Commissioner Hertz?
I, I mean, like the idea of maintaining historical aspects as much as possible has, but I, I want to be cognizant of the potential cost implications of trying to retrofit a Ramada on the structure and how that would work. Do we have any input on that from the construction company? Or is that something we would seek to get?
I know Randy had said that, that, that particular Ramada would definitely be part of phase two. It's not something that's included in the, the original renovation.
Or do we need to move it now, right? We can leave this in place for the time being and let it show her.
We have an awful lot of dirt up there that needs to go somewhere. I mean, they conceivably could cut holes in the top of it. Cause this, I mean, this is concrete steel walls, floor and top. But they could conceivably fill it, whether they fill it with slurry, what, that'd be an awful lot of slurry because it's 325,000 gallons. But they could definitely fill it with dirt.
It's true. I, I would strongly advocate to keep the pump house. I think having those sort of unique things is going to make it more of a unique part. Cause especially when it's first built and all the plants are going to be new and everything's going to look new. It'll bring like, I don't know, some cohesiveness to the historic side of it. And, and make it a unique thing to see. The, the, the larger structure, I have no idea. I think it'd be, it'd be nice to have something there, but it's also more complicated and. more complicated and more of a, more historic value than there is, uh, looks nice to look at. But I, I don't see any reason why it should go. You know, it should be, we should incorporate as much as we can into the, into it to make it, to make it unique. Not just any other park out there. That's my piece.
Thank you, Commissioner Faith. Commissioner Gertz?
Okay, one more thing. I, I'm trying to align like where the cell tower is and the pump house and the drawing and I'm, best I can tell, the pump house is either really close or on top of a fire lane. I'm just not sure.
No.
It's not? Okay.
It's surrounded and actually goes around a perimeter of the park.
Well, this is the angle. Okay. This is the angle of the shop. So the pump house is right here.
That picture's that way.
Yep.
So the pump house is right here.
Okay.
And because of these stairs, that tells me they're retaining it.
Yeah, yeah.
So why move it?
Yeah, so what I was getting at with that is I think at this point, since this is not a phase one thing, we could add to our recommendation that we explore the ability to retain and incorporate these elements. But we're at the same time, we're not causing any delay. Right? Because this is not a phase one thing unless something comes back and goes, no, we need to design for this now because we're making decisions. That would be my recommendation on it.
Thank you.
I like that. I like that a lot.
Are there any more questions?
I'm going to have general comments about the park.
Thank you.
Like feedback to, to Randy.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for coming in.
So general comments, Commissioner Faith?
Did Randy ask for that, I believe?
Yeah. Yes. He's, he's asking for your feedback, yeah.
I, I can't so much tell from the design, but I would hope there's like dirt paths throughout. Like I can see on the west side, there's like some dirt paths that go through. But in the northwest corner between the playground and Sunset Terrace, it's like a, a big area that doesn't look like there's any sort of paths going through.
I didn't see it on there, but the version he showed had more paths than the version that we're looking at here.
Yeah.
Because they already incorporated another lateral path like right here. Because that was my observation as well, it's a bunch of dead space, not dead space, but like not, not active space.
And maybe not, not paved paths. But they should be some.
Exploring all the paths.
Yes.
And I think you made the comment too that, or at least the way I understood it, as the, as everything grows in, there's almost like an evolution to how the park is growing into itself over time. Did you guys get that impression as well?
Yeah.
I, I understood that more as the park wasn't meant to be super manicured and more vegetated. Yeah, more as it might appear in nature with the trimming back of, we don't want a like, a bush, we want a tree, not a bush, right? When it comes to a mesquite or something like that, right?
The commissioners?
Yes.
The design concept behind this is more of a natural native desert landscape.
Makes sense. As it otherwise would have appeared in nature.
Correct.
Well, I would hope that it's designed in a way that you don't need a bunch of like, keep off and keep outside. Stay to the trail kind of things, like there's enough trails where you could walk around and see what you want to see and get around without damaging the, the ecosystem.
For sure.
Is the, is the homestead going to be fenced? Or natural landscaping or anything to keep? No, I don't know.
There is a fence shown on those plans that the Heritage Center has said, no.
Yeah.
We want this to blend, that you don't want it to be isolated or look isolated because it is an historic district.
Okay, yeah, good. Thanks.
Commissioner Gertz?
I would just second, just for the record, the comment on the pass. It's nice to see in the video more paths through there. And I would also second the, like, let's put some more in the, and if they're, they weren't in the video, I missed them on the north corner. Do we know what the cottages will be used for? Or is that just like a TBD, like, well, like maybe they're used for storage for the event space or maybe they're used for, I don't know, like an area that could also run?
Commissioner Gertz, are you referring to the two smaller cottages east of the homestead?
Indeed.
Yeah, those are still in discussion what those will be used for.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Can I give some comments?
Yes, figure it away, sir.
General feedback, I, I think overall I like the design. It incorporated a lot of our feedback and the feedback received in the surveys. So overall, it's, I'm in favor of the design. I still would like a water feature of some sort. I know it was in red and taken off for now, but even like a, some sort of a fountain, some, some, some sort of water would be nice in my opinion. So that's, that's my feedback.
Yes.
I know the Heritage Center is planning on recreating. The hilltop used to be all gravity fed as far as watering the whole system. So as you walk up there, you'll see old rock lined, like little canals or little ditches and things like that. And because none of that seems to be retained on there, we would like to create it within our rental area. So there may be a water feature in our area, which of course without the fence would be wide open for everyone, so.
Can you be more specific with what you're, what you're referring to in that area? Where would that be? Right around the cottage? Homestead? The homestead?
Yes, there is some sloped areas on the west side of the main cottage. As you come a little bit south where the rose garden starts. And we would like that as part of our educational, part of the museum, to be able to show how the water was at this. I mean, these, these ditches ran all the way around this hill, gravity fed. And that's how everything was watered. That's absolutely how the swimming pool was filled. So the swimming pool was part of this gravity fed systems. And so we would like to recreate a little bit. So I mean, we're not talking a big major water feature. I mean, nothing like a, you know, a splash pad or anything like that. But at least it would give a little story and would have some flowing water.
And the, the plan is to take out those, all of the canals and the the water channels?
Unfortunately, yes.
I would suggest that we give some of it.
Thank you.
You know, part of it, like to me and disorder, like.
In the area that is shown as the cactus garden, there is a pretty large section of it that has even a little stone bridge over it. And we have some old videos showing ladies in nineteen thirties outfits walking across this little bridge. So yeah, we would love to see that.
I think that's the kind of stuff that's going to make this unique. I mean, you could put, you could build a park anywhere and make it to this design, but you can't incorporate that type of stuff anywhere, you know, like the historic element and the unique aspect of it. And even if it's just a small section of it, it would blend in with the, the whole kind of intention of the site. So it's not just, you know, the museum and the, the historic Heritage Society.
Heritage Center.
Heritage Center. Where, you know, you walk out the doors and you're still experiencing it. You know, because it, I mean, the history wasn't indoors, like our history was farming and outdoors. And I don't know, I would hate to see all of it go. I think at least a token amount of it should be kept and have, you know, some sort of historical placards up that when you leave the museum aspect of it, you can walk out and, you know, kind of continue it and encourage people to go through the park and walk around and see those kind of more unique elements. And I hope you write that down as needed to Randy.
I agree with that. And I like the design.
Yeah, yeah. I do want to say I really like the design too.
Yeah.
And I, I think there's easily a way to incorporate everything. And I, I do think they've done a, a good job at it too, but probably also they've done some things for cost reasons, their simplicity, that maybe we could revisit to keep more of the historical aspect in it.
Are there any other comments or I think we've heard from everybody on the commission?
Want to, do you need a motion that summarizes the comments as well, or is it okay to say in the motion?
The recommendation we can add to it?
Yeah.
Yes.
So do I need to summarize our recommendations in the motion and view on covering?
Yes, and I think it might be so as is with the added recommendation to explore the historic value, water features and the, I'm not sure how to say it, yeah, how to, how to?
We're focusing on phase one though. So we know that water feature is down the road either way.
Right.
So that, the recommendation to explore that's fine, but that won't be included in this.
So would it be more, we're recommending the plans as they are, but we want to be sure we're preserving as much of the historical elements that are there.
With the focus on or something, some verbiage like that, you know? That sound good?
I mean, I'd specifically include the the pump house that I don't see on this design that I don't see any reason to take it out.
Well.
Except that's not phase one.
Yeah, so we're just.
We just want to make sure to preserve it though.
On phase one now.
But does phase one include removing it?
I, it, I don't think so. But what I understood is that you can, the fire access road goes around it and we don't need to do anything with it right now.
So I think it should be part of our motion to preserve it.
Yeah.
So maybe I'll give it a shot.
And you're under the impression that it was to be removed under phase one?
The top was to load it and fill it in, which is fine. All, all we need is what you can see. No one's ever going to see the concrete down the ground. But again, that would be later phase two.
I would move that the, give this a shot. The commission overall likes the, the concept, but would like to see more of the historic elements maintained and incorporated into the landscape section of the park as an extension of the historic elements.
Including the water channels.
Yeah, specifically including the water channels, the pump house and the the giant water holding thing.
Reservoir.
The reservoir, thank you.
We know you know.
And I, I mean, that one, I know there's a lot of practical things, so maybe part of it or some element of it as well as natural paths.
How could we summarize that just a bit more for the move? No offense, because it's hard.
I'll, I'll try, I'll give it a shot.
It's our ace in the hole. He's going to wrap this all up for us.
I'll move to approve the phase one plan with the addition of the sidewalks that were shown in the video. Incorporation of additional, recommending, incorporation of additional dirt sidewalks in the northern part of the design. And with a mind on retaining the historical elements to the extent possible, meaning by that the water tank, the pump house and elements of the canal system that were in place.
He is incredible, isn't he? He's good.
I'll second that.
Are there any questions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? All opposed?
So now just keep in mind that that motion is what is the recommendation that Randy will pass on to council. That doesn't mean that council necessarily is going to agree with all of that, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Understood.
If they don't have veto power over council, I understand. And thank you so much for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Work this fancy computer here.
You guys are certainly welcome to stay, but also don't feel bad if you don't want to stay for the rest.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I, I'm lost in my.
Page eleven.
I'm on Google.
Okay, we'll just close that.
It's Google Litchfield Park somehow, I didn't.
It'll get easier.
Okay, agendas and minutes go here for agendas and minutes.
It read your mind.
It's loading, here you go. I'll race you. October ninth, approval of. Come in, okay. Okay. Approval of minutes presenter Tricia Kramer, Community and Recreation Services Director, Discussion and Possible Action to approve the September eleventh regular meeting minutes.
Chairman Teddy, commissioners, the draft minutes from the September eleventh meeting are in your packets. I will just defer to you all if you have any changes or if you're good with it as is.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? And so it is. Yard of the Quarter presenter Andrea Phillips, Vice Chairperson, Discussion and Possible Action regarding the handling of Yard of the Quarter move forward.
All right, thank you. So just a really quick little history. I, I started on this commission in two thousand and six when it was called Recreation Arts and Public Round, no Recreation Arts and Parks Commission, four was RPG. The first yard of the quarter was awarded by the Cityscape Commission, which was a totally different separate commission in two thousand and eight. In two thousand and eleven, the Recreation Arts and Parks combined with Cityscape to become the RPG like we are today. Beautification and Tree Board Committees that were part of the Cityscape then became part of us. Okay, so the beautification actually met quarterly after the RPG meetings. I was the chair of that one to select the yard of the quarter. The Tree Board met separately and they basically just said, yes, we have enough trees or no, we don't, to still become a tree city. And that was always a yes, so that went. Okay, so in, oh, I don't know why I put that in there, Scalper survey. In two thousand and eighteen, RPG and beautification merged, so we didn't have to have the separate meeting after our meeting to pick yard of the quarter. It just became part of us. The Tree Board was officially dissolved then. And in, I think there were seven of us on, or maybe not all of us that voted back in two thousand and eighteen to decide yard of the quarter. So in two thousand and nineteen, the relevancy of yard of the quarter was discussed at one of our meetings and Brian Goodman was a presenter. I think I've brought it up once since then, so here we are today. I think I've brought it up once since then, so here we are today. I feel very strongly that it's time to visit the relevancy of this program. Do we keep it going? Is it time to change it to make it go away? Or maybe redesign it? Um, the city code doesn't necessarily say. That yard of the quarter is the name of the formal recognition, okay, but there is a piece in the city code that I think is in here. That says that there is some formal recognition, however. That can be changed and it isn't hard to change that little piece of the city code. Um, we are not landscape professionals or design professionals. Nor do I think any of us have degrees in. Plant selection or house design or color or anything like that. Um, I feel that the way that it is carried out right now is very biased, almost like insider training or nepotism a little bit. To me, it doesn't look good or feel right for us to nominate and then vote on our nominations. That feels very uncomfortable to me. The commissioners' participation in nominating and voting is often sketchy. With even multiple reminders going out, we don't get a buy-in all the time on both the nominating and the voting. And now it's not even a level playing field because there are four separate areas, the village, the greens, cache. And that, I don't know what it's called, the area north of the prize, since that's terrible, yes, thank you. We can't even get in there. So. I just feel. That. It's served its purpose, but for where we are today in the city and the fact that it's us. I just feel, and I've seen them next door, like, why is that person standing outside taking picture of my house? I'm like, that's me because I'm doing yard of the quarter, you know, only that's not what it was, but I've done that, you know? So I guess I just wanna bring this up to get your input. I think it's clear how I feel. Um. I have talked to others who live in Litchfield, live in a different state, live in Scottsdale, live in Phoenix, and I've asked them. They kind of feel the same as I do. So I am just open to discussion, I'm just throwing it out there.
Commissioner Faith?
I think it sort of serves a purpose in historic Litchfield where there's not an HOA. But I think. In the HOA community specifically, it doesn't. It doesn't make sense and it kind of waters waters it down. And makes it complicated and. More wishy-washy or. I don't know, I've also never really bought, I've been one of the ones that haven't really bought into it. So I wouldn't be opposed to it going away, but over the years. You guys have convinced me somewhat that it makes sense.
Can I ask everyone a question? What do we think the purpose of? I say, I say we, or maybe it's an individual, what what is, what is the purpose of yard of the quarter?
I was. Sure, I was just wondering the same thing and I, when we've discussed this in the past, I think we used it as it's motivational. Less of a, I mean, maybe there's a trickle reward in there, but it's more like, hey, I wanna win that, I don't know that that's actually happening. I don't think so. I think people are more motivated by like, hey, that looks nice versus, oh, some other people recognize that that looks nice. I don't personally have a problem like us being the judges, cuz I don't, it's all subjective and like, I don't. I don't feel weird about doing that, but I I also don't. Feel like it serves a significant purpose and it's um. Been somewhat half-hearted.
And it's time consuming and kind of a hassle for some and.
If we recognize that. This is a community. Oriented. Program, project. And. We see that what we're trying isn't really accomplishing the goal of, you know, celebrating that community. And that's what I think I'm here.
Yeah.
Then isn't it our job to explore options otherwise?
Yeah. And I think the fact that this community that we're celebrating, we can't encompass all of it in what we're doing.
Yeah.
Is a big. To me, like if so.
I agree, that makes a lot of sense cuz it, like, it makes sense in historic Litchfield, but not in the HOA neighborhoods, but we can't just do something for. One part of the city.
We need to be inclusive.
Well, I I don't, I get it, I I don't. That line of reasoning doesn't bother me at all because it's simply. It's different, that that's handled by an HOA and here we don't have an HOA, so we're trying to figure out other ways to motivate people to maintain their yard, so. I don't want, like, I, I agree in principle, like, of we're we're ending up at the same place. I'm just saying that everything has to be equal everywhere, to me is nonsense, cuz it's already unequal. There's already an HOA and a not an HOA, and we had a handle.
Not equal, it's just access.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just access, not even equal.
Yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying, they're like, we're not, they're they're never in the running, so like, that's nonsense, I agree, yeah, yeah.
Can I ask what? I didn't even know it was still a thing until I came back on here, to be honest, like, I'm not trying to be rude, I'm just being honest, how many people know that this is a thing? So.
And that's another question.
Like, I don't, you know, I I just, and I I like first world problems, do we really need to be voting on yards of the month when there's like? You know, other stuff that we could focus on?
Commissioner Faith once posed the question, do you remember when he said this? Commissioner Faith said, I've lived here my whole life and I didn't hear about yard of the quarter until I came to RPG.
Well, hers and mine were the same way.
So she comes here, you know, perhaps a realistic approach is that, so as I'm, as I'm pondering. This after I saw in the minutes. I'm driving around and I'm like, oh, my God, there's a seven-foot skeleton climbing out of a yard staring at me. And I was thinking, we talked about that before, where if we had some sort of a seasonal. So right now, obviously, would be Halloween. So Halloween Yard of the Quarter, I don't know how you put it, but something like that. Pictures on social media that are voted on by the community invite the, no?
No voting.
Did I go too far?
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's okay, take it away.
I don't think we need to vote, why do we need to pick best one, just take pictures and show them.
Good, good.
Just highlight them. You know, we, why do we need to vote?
You're outside the box.
There's still some discerning of what you're gonna post and what you're not gonna.
Well, and the other thing is, who's to say, like, when we were picking yards, those people hired a very expensive. Yard person to design, okay, they spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on their yard, we picked their yard. These guys over here did it all themselves and it looks lovely. So like, that part kind of rubs me the wrong way too, but we don't know. You know?
Is there like a, and I'm sorry, I'm having trouble getting out of the paradigm, I guess, but is there like a top five? These are the top five? Like, when you say there's, there's not a, a, you know, one supreme yard of the quarter. Is there like a few that we highlight that, and then how many? Commissioner Gerson?
Yeah, I mean, there's always gonna be a degree of selection, right, so let's say, and I think I like the idea of let's. Promote, cuz I think that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to promote uh citizens. Taking care of the yards, decorating it nicely different parts of the year. And maybe we could use a social media to do that, maybe some highlights in the street line, whatever, right? There's always a selection criteria, right, you're not gonna pick like my dumpy pumpkin just and be like, well, that's gonna put that next to the house. That put all these sweet decorations up, right, there's always gonna be some, it's not all equal, so like, that again, doesn't rub me the wrong way at all. Um, how I'd leave that to staff or the social media team to to select, like, I don't think we need to do that.
Ask, remember, we, and it wa, maybe two or three or four years ago, we decided, cuz probably I brought it up again. To have input from the community to take us out of the nominating part. Do you know how many we have?
Kinda hand it over to the community a lot more if we could.
Two, okay, so I don't have a problem with that and if we wanted to do highlights, then let the community submit the highlights. And if nobody submits anything, then there aren't any until the word gets out. Or it just goes away.
Yeah, we could do, I think. Um, I'm sorry, I'm just like spitballing on this, but if we had. Entrance, like, you you have entrance for the um Christmas decorations, right? So like, they actually, people formally enter, right?
Yes.
If we did something like. Supplied QR code signs or something like that in people's yards, and then let other people about it off, like, we'd have to figure out the logistics of it.
For what?
For whatever we're doing, like whether it's.
Like, it's the prettiest?
The seasonal thing, the whatever, like, we're doing, like.
Halloween, for example.
I don't wanna step on the Christmas program.
Yeah, we can do, so it's just Halloween, what are you gonna else are you gonna do, Valentine's Day?
I mean, you you could, or we could just bring some moral on that later. But I'm sorry, I do that too. Commissioner Oberth, you had your hand up at one point.
Um. I agree with, I don't I don't have a lot of new things to say, but I I agree with a lot of the sentiment that. Some people have that it's. Most people don't know about it, um, the program as it is, I I'd be in favor of it going away. And I personally don't think we need to replace it with anything. Um, if the staff and social media wanna highlight things in the community, they have that discretion. I don't personally think RPG needs to be in charge of any programs. Where we're trying to. Do any kind of voting or highlighting things, I I don't think we need to play that role any longer personally.
Well, that begs the question then, what is the requirement in city code and then? What would we have to do to go outside of that city code?
Yeah, so it currently says.
Recommended to.
It says, oh, read it, recommend, recommend quarterly for formal recognition by the council, those homeowners. Who have maintained or enhanced their property by making significant landscape or architecture improvements. So that's what it says, but my point is, we can change that.
Yeah, we can make a recommendation to the city council that the code go away, that that item of the city code. Is no longer valid or goes away.
I think we've. Although we shouldn't replace it with something similar, we could replace it, I think I've spent more time. In this group talking about the program than actually doing it. Existing one, and like, we could have like a, I don't know, community cleanup day and help someone clean up their yard.
Don't need a codifying, we don't need a codifying, yeah.
Not not in the code.
I'd like the community cleanup actually probably falls under one of the other ones. And and maybe you just recommend that. That to council that this be removed because it's not.
Yeah, it's not.
I mean, it's not a public grounds function, it's not a recreation function, it's not a public grounds function, so if you guys are feeling strongly about. Not wanting to give input on people's private property, maybe that's the way to.
It almost feels like the. P and P and Z function or the design review, like, look at people that made big improvements to their house.
Two thousand twenty-five, it's not even appropriate, and I mean, we've already instituted new programs like tree painting.
Yeah.
You know, that are so much more relevant, so much more beneficial and encompass the community, like. The volunteer or number of volunteers for that is like triple. So I, and I think with this hilltop going, we're gonna have so many more opportunities that we're gonna be able to do positive things with.
Just on the library partnerships, holy cow.
Without judging people's like design style and color they're from to war.
I still like having like a Halloween thing. I'm sure Christmas is gonna continue on in isolation, there would still be a Christmas thing. And then.
Christmas is, I mean, the the holiday decorating contest is a function of rec and so.
Right, it has nothing to do with us, but.
To have you guys. Help with that or promote that or judge that, if that's a way to kind of do it, I mean.
It's really like looking back, like, that's something that's been successful and this other one hasn't been successful.
Yeah.
So what other? I think I'm bored with moving to.
People vote with different.
We, would we make a motion to recommend to council to strike this from the code?
Yes.
I would say, why don't you recommend that staff go back and and uh work with the city manager or city admin to see. What the process is.
Processes.
Could we also recommend that we? Um, explore ways to celebrate. Five. Halloween decorated homes.
We could pull.
For this quarter.
I would have that be a separate, that that would be a separate thing. And I think that could almost be a staff thing through city line and and social media and just. See what happens, you know, and you just put the pictures out there. On our Facebook page, on our.
Grow organically.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not gonna get anything done for October.
No, but even for next year, you know, start next year and put it on social media, show us your Halloween stuff. And we'll put it on Facebook or, you know.
So what is our recommendation now, just asking city council to?
Station to staff to approach the city manager. Who else?
That's it, really.
Okay.
Wait, we'll study internally.
To see the proper way to remove that item from the city code.
And we can put it on next month's agenda.
They've been going through the code in place to clean it out.
Okay, so.
Got to this part, but.
Do we need like a, like a formal or can we just?
No, we need.
Do we need a motion?
I think so.
Okay, I can make a motion to ask staff to work with the city manager to look at. Section two, seven, three purposes and duties of RPG, I don't know what it's called, bullet. For. Um, to see if this can be eliminated.
I second that.
We'll report back to you next month on next steps.
To see it, hopefully, this could be.
So we can now vote on it or all in favor? All in favor, say aye.
You need us, did we get a second?
Yeah.
Aye.
All opposed? And so it is. Okay. Commissioners report on current events, this is the time commissioners may present a brief summary on current events. The commission may not propose, discuss, deliberate or take any legal action on the information presented pursuant to. The law that covers that. Commissioner Faith?
I'm I'm happy to see that uh the count, I think as a council or a commission, we're moving in the right direction, you know? Making more. Significant input, changing things, like, I I think we're heading in the right direction, I'm excited to see, you know, what's next.
Right on. What do you got?
Uh, I agree with you, I love the direction, it's fun, um, I also, um. This goes to Kyle, actually, and I know that this has been in in the process, that the new sprinklers around the pond and stuff, if nobody has seen those at night. They're amazing and they're not covering the whole thing in water, you're not dodging sprinklers, you're not falling, so it's been really nice to take walks around the pond. That's all I know.
Commissioner Colbreath?
I'll say, um, I've enjoyed seeing the farmer's market that's at Litchfield Square, I know that's not a. City event, but it's nice to see uh the square being used for that purpose and. I'm hopeful that it'll grow and become even more popular as the weather is getting nicer and nicer. Um, and also, I I like the palm tree lights, I saw that they can change the color on those, they're purple right now for. Um, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, I believe it was, so that's, um, I think the palm trees look really nice.
Commissioner Gerson, excited to see things going vertical um in the new part of town. The orange trees being replaced has been something we've uh, we've been waiting to see happen for a long time, so I'm uh. Excited to see that happening down, most of the streets I've driven down have those replaced, so good stuff.
Vice Chair Phillips?
I'm just glad we made it through another summer and we're starting on my favorite time of year with all the. Arts in the parks will start and festival and. Arts in the parks will start and festival and all of that stuff.
Lot of fun.
Yep.
So I'm really excited that uh the fall has hit, you know, and the weather's changing and. It's, it's really fun to actually drive around and look at some of the Halloween decorations, there's skeletons carrying caskets and. Large skeletons climbing out of the ground, so it's, it's certainly something I would encourage everybody to check out. Um, also the farmer's market, I'm absolutely loving it, I try and hit it every week, um, it looks like it's growing. So it's, right, there's more there now than there was.
Change, you know.
And there's a, there's a car club that, that hanging out there now too, classic car club, if you're ever interested in checking that out as well. Um, other than that, just really excited about the fall. So there's only one more thing we used to be waiting for right now, but I don't think we really wait for it so much, I think there was.
Which is made for you.
Changes in roles. Then we don't have one, so with that said, we are adjourned.